Started, uh, it's just, you know, um, quorum introductions for the meantime. Uh, does anyone have any modifications to the agenda? Again, we do have one item on consent. It was passed unanimously through the project review committee contingent on its clearing all its cycle issues. And we did actually finally get the last round of cycle. All issues are cleared, so that project, um, you know, makes it through. So now would be the time, uh, to let me know if you'd want to pull it. Otherwise with the approval of the agenda, we will also approve that project. Do I have a motion?
Prove the agenda.
Thank you, Jane, and I see a second from Anthony. Tracy, will you call the roll then if we will take, um, that vote for approval of the agenda? Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Melanie, are you here yet? Not yet, okay, uh, Chris. I think I heard you say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Anthony.
Yes, on the motion for these agenda.
I say yes, Jane firsted, so I will say Jane says yes, Tom.
Yes.
Craig.
Hi.
George.
Yes.
Andrea.
Uh, yes.
Newman. Newman? I, you were here. And I can't hear you now.
I, this is George, I thought I heard a yes.
Okay, I can't hear for sure.
Yeah, so let's go, Newman, if you can text me.
Yeah, Nicole.
Yes.
You, Virginia. Okay, I saw her thumbs up, alright, so if, uh, we're just waiting on Newman's.
Uh, Kevin's here.
Um, I, I did, I got Kevin.
Sorry.
Okay, alright, well. And I still don't see Melanie, so.
Hey Melanie.
I'm right here.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Do we wanna?
Yes, uh, are you in favor of approving the agenda or against?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Fantastic, so now we have, uh, the approval of the minutes. Do I have any motion to amend or, um, any comments about the minutes?
Melanie sent, she sent me one correction, um, her name was spelled incorrectly in item one, but it was spelled correctly in other places, so I just made that edit.
Awesome, thank you.
I motion to approve the minutes with that last change.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a second?
The motion. I'll second.
Does anybody want to pass the, the minutes?
Um, yeah, any objections? Okay, wonderful, um, okay, so we're gonna move into representatives' reports. So we'll go ahead and we'll start, uh, with Teddy, who will give us, you know, a report on everything up here, which is gonna come later. So Teddy, the floor is yours. Just be a little bit more, um, on top of the meeting, this, since we have so many people here tonight. Thank you.
Mandy needs to mute. Hey Anthony, do you have control over the mute? We had a few people.
Sorry.
Can you all hear me?
Hi Teddy.
Hey Tracy. Okay, I'll, I'll bet, um, I hope everyone's well, it's good to see everyone, we're already in May, so it's kind of crazy, this year is just continuing to fly by. Um, it looks like hopefully we'll be in person sooner than later, so, um, maybe this is one of the last few virtual meetings, who knows? But we're, we're moving along and I hope you're well. Um, a few things I wanted to share before we get to the topic of the peer, which I know is at the top of everyone's mind. Um, just some housekeeping stuff and just to kind of loop you in on things that are going on at City Hall right now. Uh, obviously budget season is in full swing, uh, I'm listening to the public comment period right now. Uh, folks are calling in from throughout the city to, uh, give their input, uh, their concerns and their priorities for the budget as it's finalized. I definitely encourage you all to, uh, stay involved with us, make your voice heard through that process. There'll be another opportunity for the community to have a public hearing on the seventeenth, so this isn't, uh, the only opportunity tonight, uh, to, to do that. There will also be a community forum hosted with the Independent Budget Analyst Office that we're gonna be hosting on Friday at six P M. I'll put the link in the chat for that. The IBA is just a great resource, if you haven't checked out their website already, they just have, uh, a citizen's guide to the budget, crash course on the budget. Uh, and they do a lot of good reports that are easy to digest, um, with a whole bunch of information on our, uh, one point six million, billion dollar general fund. So it's important, impacts a lot of different services in the city, uh, so definitely encourage you to attend on Friday, I'll put the link to register in the chat as I said. Um, and our, our priorities for that budget process are gonna be, um, numerous. We put our, our previous budget memo out, I'll link that so you can reference it. It's obviously gonna be a tight budget season with all the deficits and, and impacts we faced due to COVID nineteen, but we are excited to see American Rescue Plan funding coming soon. That should be able to cover about seventy percent of the deficit that we're in, so that is great, welcome news. Uh, I have a lot of other details on that, feel free to give me a, a message or a call if you wanna talk about that, I'm happy to provide more details on, on what we know. The other thing I wanted to share is that Council President Campbell was, uh, meeting with some District Two business leaders last week. Uh, it was really, really good meeting with restaurant owners, different business owners from throughout the district. Uh, Denny Knox from the OBMA was there representing part of OB's, uh, coalition along with, uh, Kyle Jaworski from Ragland's Public House, so that was awesome to get their input. The last time that we had that, a meeting like that, we ended up putting up a memo together to, with like six different bullet points. All of those things were implemented, um, things like temporary outdoor dining permits, uh, some, some business relief funding, a lot of the eviction moratorium, parking issues. All those things we were able to get, uh, relayed to the mayor's office who was able to make those changes, so that was really cool. We're expecting a similar outcome, uh, with the input we received last time, so just wanted to share that. Um, and the last thing I wanted to touch on, I know we had an item put on the agenda for this meeting with, uh, about, about the peer, but I wanted to talk about it now. Um, I don't think, uh, you know, I, we, we intended to have the departments here to be able to present, and I don't think that that's possible for this meeting. But we wanted to get everyone, uh, as much info as we can, our office is gonna be scheduling a community forum with all the respective departments around, uh, that are involved with the Ocean Beach areas, includes capital and engineering, parks and rec, facilities, coastal commission, different agencies, different departments that are involved. So we're, we're hoping to get some folks out to be able to do a community forum on this, so that the community can really see the scope of the damage, um, some plans for, uh, partial reopening, which will be coming soon. You may have seen some of the news on that, with some of those repairs that are gonna be, uh, started on soon. Um, and we're also gonna be working with community to put together some sort of working group that can, um, be another avenue that the community can provide input and stay involved as the peer, uh, gets the full, uh, full support that it needs, uh, in that long-term solution. We're obviously gonna be involving our state and federal partners, it's gonna be, uh, a, a long-term project, and so we want the community involved, so that we can try to make a twenty-first century peer. We had a good meeting, uh, last week with just a small group of OB leaders, including Andrea, um, just to get a sense of where things were. And I think there were a lot of good ideas that came out of that meeting, and I think the community is super invested in making a, 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 a peer last, longer than the previous one. Um, so we have some plans for getting that input, getting the information out, uh, and then obviously getting that peer reopened as soon as possible. So, uh, happy to take questions on anything I can, obviously, we, we wanna have a more in-depth presentation on the peer specifics. There's engineers involved, and I can't speak to all of the, the structural nuance and specifics that, that it, those, those folks can, so we wanna make sure that they're able to be present for that, but I'm happy to answer questions that I can.
Andrea, I got a question.
Yeah, go for it, Craig.
Uh, Teddy, um, what is the current status of the vendor ordinance?
The vendor ordinance.
Okay.
The vendor ordinance is still a top priority for us, um, if you were at the town council, um, last couple of weeks ago, um, it was announced that that original ordinance had run into some hiccups with some other of the council districts, that's partly what we knew. Um, but our office is now kind of in the driver's seat, uh, uh, again, on that issue, our office is working with the city attorney's office to look at our options. Um, you know, I think just like you and everyone else on the call, we, we see the issue differently in Ocean Beach specifically. Uh, it's a different problem in District Two, not just OB, so we recognize the issue, uh, and we're gonna be working with the city attorney's office to figure out what we can do, uh, as soon as possible.
When do you expect it'll come before, when do you expect a draft ordinance would come before council?
I don't have a clear timeline, but our goal, uh, initially at the beginning of the year, uh, as it was stated, was have something in place by the summer months. Our office still wants to try to make that happen, we are doing everything we can to make that happen, but, uh, I think we've run into a little bit of setbacks, so we just have to readjust, uh, we're having some meetings scheduled. Right now, we're just in total budget mode, given all the fifty-plus presentations on budget, um, but we, this is a major priority for us, so we are, uh, gonna be talking to our folks about that, um, Venus, my chief of staff, is directly involved and will be, um, getting some more information soon, so I'll relay that to the board, but just rest assured, that's a priority for us as well.
Thank you.
Thank you Teddy, uh, do I have anyone else who has questions for Jennifer Campbell's, um, Council President Campbell's office?
I have a question, this is Kevin.
Thank you Kevin.
Um, Teddy, are you gonna stick around for the, uh, peer discussion item tonight?
I'm, I'm gonna try, we're, uh, I'm trying to be in two places at once with the, uh, public meeting on the budget right now. Um, so I may be in my living room and back and forth, but I, I, I wanna be able to stay, um, and if I could just add, I think that if I watch it later, if we have to exchange notes later, the conversation that I had last week with some of the community members was really fruitful, and I hope that that same conversation can happen here around what the community wants to see, um, for a peer, you know, how they wanna envision that, and plans to kind of gauge community input and bring in all the expertise. There's a lot, it's, it's a very unique community, there's a lot of talented people in the community with a lot of ideas, uh, so we wanna, we wanna try to capture as much of that as we can, so, um, I will try to stay around for that, um.
I see a lot of people signed in tonight, and I assume they're here for that, so it's, uh, here's a, here's a great opportunity to, uh.
Absolutely, maybe, yeah, maybe you can kind of clarify that a little bit.
Yeah, so, uh, I mean, we're definitely going to be relaying information back to them, and this is the first of what's going to be many public comment periods and public, uh, meetings, so, uh, I, you know, I, if Teddy's here, or if Teddy's not here, he will get the full communication of this meeting, uh, you know, regardless of, of what's talked about. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, uh, before we move on to Coda, cause I think he's the only other person here, I did just wanna make it clear, cause I, I don't think I made it clear enough. Um, so the project, uh, forty-nine twenty-eight Brighton Ave, you have been approved, so you don't have to hang around the rest of the meeting unless you want to. I will go ahead and I will fill out your, uh, information bulletin six-twenty tomorrow and send that to your project manager, so you can move forward with your project. Thank you so much for your time, uh, and I wish you the best of luck in the rest of your, uh, project. Alright, thank you, and then without further ado, I'm gonna let, uh, Coda take the floor, Coda, are you there?
Yes, hey, good evening, everybody, uh, my name's Coda Zeiser, District Two Community Rep. Mayor Gloria. Uh, unfortunately, not a whole lot to report from our office either, uh, we are in full budget season mode right now. Um, so a few quick, high priorities, top, uh, you know, top-line things that we're really advocating for in the budget. Um, we have ten million dollars in nonprofit and small business loans, we have ten point two million dollars going to the convention center so that we can revitalize it. Damage, uh, repairing damages from this past year's, um, operations there, that is set to return, uh, to normal convention center use come August. We have ten million dollars for, uh, Mayor Gloria's Complete Sexy Streets Initiative. We also have ten million dollars in emerg, uh, immediate assistance for homelessness relief. Um, so this is just kind of the top-line items, um, if you have any really specific questions about the budget within various departments, please do send them along to me. Um, I'm sure Teddy touched on this earlier, but today kicked off the budget review hearing process, and so from now, for about the next two weeks, department by department is gonna be coming forward to council to go over the specifics within their budget. This is an opportunity for community input, as well as to hear some of the line-by-line details about what people are gonna be using these funds for. Um, so if you have a department that you're really interested in hearing about, please let me know, and I can tell you when they'll be coming forward to council. Um, that's all the updates from my end, I'll put in my info in the chat so you can reach out, um, with any specific questions or concerns.
Thank you, Coda, do we have any questions for Mayor Todd Gloria's office, yes, Craig?
Yes.
Andrea, as, uh, Coda, as the treasurer, um, do you know if the budget has provision for the five hundred dollar, uh, expense reimbursement to community pla, planning groups, and that will be going forward as in prior years?
I had not heard about that, uh, but I can definitely inquire for you, uh, if it's something that was happening in previous years, especially with community planning groups, I imagine it will keep in there, uh, will stay in there as well. Uh, but let me make sure I get confirmation for you, um, I'm sorry, I didn't see who answered the questions, then Craig?
Yes, we've always, as a treasurer, we've, we have always been able to submit, the city has had an ongoing program, uh, for up to five hundred dollars in reimbursement of necessary expenses. And of course, this year would be tremendously appreciated as we've incurred additional costs relating to, uh, having to use web-based, uh, services in order to do meetings.
Okay, got it, I can definitely, I get you an answer on that, um, Craig, you and I can connect offline about when you typically send, uh, requests for reimbursement, um, and I can get you more details on that.
You know what the fiscal year is, so we like to get him, I like to send him in, uh, in June.
Okay.
That's our full fiscal year.
Perfect, sounds great.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question, I have a question for you, Coda.
Yep.
Could you talk a little bit about the budget spending for homelessness? You mentioned ten million dollars was going to homelessness issues, how is that being allocated?
So our full switch-up on our homelessness strategies was really the compassionate approach, uh, for more engagement with homeless individuals, uh, more social work and mental health services. So of that ten million dollars, uh, some of it is going to bolstering street outreach, so contracting and providing more resources with organizations like PATH, who I know is now specifically operating within Ocean Beach. We're also adding short-term detox beds for those, um, individuals who are maybe battling addiction or trying to rehab from it. We also have about three hundred new interim shelter beds that will be city-run, so that's similar to these beds that are operating in places like Golden Hall. That's in addition to the ones that are operating with Alpha Project, uh, Father Joe's Village, PATH, um, and then we have, uh, investments into re, rapid rehousing programs. So our really goal here is to make sure that, yes, we are getting people off the streets, but that we are connecting them with transitional housing, and to get them into permanent housing down the road. So making sure that we have enough funds and resources going to that, um, that middle step where we get somebody off the street and connecting them to, you know, a transitional house. Um, I can send you the full press release on that, I have a brief overview notes here, but I can send you the full press release that really breaks down within the ten million dollars, how much is going to each different, um, initiative. Um, and I can share that with Andrea right now as well.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, I feel like, uh, outreach is probably certainly an important aspect of that, and we appreciate, uh, that coming into Ocean Beach.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'm on mute, uh, does anyone have any final questions for the mayor's office, Mayor Gloria's office, Coda, okay, wonderful.
Quick one if I can.
Yeah, Kevin.
Uh, Coda, do you know if the mayor's office is involved in this, uh, sidewalk vending ordinance effort? I know the previous administration was, uh, you know, key part of that.
Yeah, so we were actually the ones really leading this effort up until, um, about last week or so, um, I can give a kind of a brief overview about the work that we've done so far. Um, so this became obviously a prominent issue as soon as we took office, um, you guys have been, you know, lobbying and advocating the previous administration. We really tried to pick off where the last admin had left off, um, and so I was out there actually personally with Teddy doing the street vendor outreach. So we were speaking with vendors themselves in person, face-to-face, um, out there canvassing for about a month from the begin, um, all of that, uh, all of March. Um, at the end of March, we handed over that data that we collected to the policy team. During that time is really when they started to face some pretty organized pushback from, um, organizations and community groups, uh, throughout the city, um, that were really advocating on behalf of the vendors themselves. So they had sent us a letter, um, asking for essentially a more thorough outreach process, um, and so that really held us up. Um, our original timeline was to put forward something before the summer, um, but with five new council members on the city council, none of whom were, um, on council when the twenty-nineteen ordinance came about. Um, we just did not believe that we had enough support there without kind of doing the outreach that, um, community groups were advocating for. And so right now, we are basically trying to restrategize here, because I understand how dire of a situation it is in OB, I've seen it personally with my own eyes. Um, spent weekends and weekday evenings out there, and so we're really exhausting every option on the table right now to bring forward something that we can pass through council. Um, but at this point, we didn't wanna bring forward anything that was going to fail and then really just, you know, have nothing to show for it. Um, and so our original timeline did get delayed a little bit, um, but we're working heavily with the council president's office, she has been a strong advocate on this issue. Um, and so we're really, at this point, exhausting any and every option that we have on the table.
Alright, I appreciate that, I mean, keep in mind that beaches and parks are subject to different rules than any other typical right-of-way, so we can maybe please all sides a little bit.
Mm-hmm, totally hear you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, wonderful, uh, so I'm gonna move into non-agenda public comment, I'm asking anyone who would like to make a comment to please utilize the raised hand function. I know Misha did get into contact with me, hi Misha, uh, prior to the meeting, so I'm gonna let him go first, and then I'll go down, uh, through the list of raised hands after that. And everyone making a non-agenda public comment gets two minutes, uh, so Misha, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks Andrea, uh, my name is Misha Shulov, I'm a ten-year resident of Ocean Beach, and I live across the street from Saratoga Park. I'm a member of the Acro Yoga, Hand Balancing, and Flow Arts communities here in San Diego. At several times a week, we gather at Saratoga Park, um, our communities are all about athleticism, creativity, we're friendly and we're inclusive to new, to, to new members. Um, really, it's a positive outlet for energy, um, we're largely like a drug-free community, and we just like to go on the grass and, um, gather and have a good time, um, practicing our crafts and arts. Um, at the last meeting, there was a discussion about the proposed, um, up, upgrades to the parks by the Parks Ad Hoc Subcommittee. I thought, I thought a lot of those upgrades were pretty cool, in particular, the Saratoga Park fitness area, sounds great, and I'm all for pull-up bars as a easy, cheap, uh, solution there. However, many of us in the communities were surprised and saddened by the proposed placement of the playground. So within Saratoga Park, um, the large square of grass that's immediately in front of the Seabreeze condos is an incredible community space. Um, all kinds of activities occur there, there's yoga classes, workouts, acro yoga, flow arts, you know, frisbee tossing, football games, picnics. Essentially, it's an amazing open space, and open space, uh, once it gets taken away, it's pretty much gone forever, you know, and open spaces can be rare to have a, a space that size, uh, of just beautiful open grass. So the, the specific placement of the playground right in the middle of that patch of grass will divide our largest open space and limit the usage of that area. Um, so I'm, I'm here just to make the board aware of this issue, and to encourage more community surveying, to ensure that these existing communities that use and love the park are not overlooked. Um, my next step is that a couple, a couple of us are gonna sit with the Parks Subcommittee on May eighteenth and dive a little deeper there. Um, but in general, I just wanna make sure that the voices of these communities are heard, and that we aren't losing something by putting a playground there. Um, we have a bit of a counterproposal to move the location of that playground just in the north end of Saratoga Park, where that grass is not really as utilized right now by different communities. And, um, it would, it would preserve that very large square of grass that's beloved by many.
Thank you, Misha, and we do look forward to your participation in our future parks meetings.
Here, thank you.
Can I take a quick moment just to respond maybe to a few of the concerns?
Um, yeah, if it's, uh, quick, thank you.
Sure, Misha, I just wanted to let you know that the proposed amenities improvements to Saratoga Park, I think, take up less than eight percent of the overall grass space, and I'd invite you to take another look at the plan, because the placement of the playground isn't really in the middle of the grass at all, it's bordering the, uh, the parking lot there, uh, on the, on the south side uh, of the park, and so I think that, you know, I look forward to talking with you more about it at our next Parks Subcommittee meeting, I won't take any more of the board's time, but thank you for.
I'd love to talk further, and specifically, it's that big square of grass that is the issue, if it was somewhere else in the, you know, the longer strip of grass, it would be perfect, and I have no problem.
Thank you guys, and we will be discussing this further at the Subcommittee, I appreciate both of you, uh, okay, wonderful, this, I, I don't see any more hands, so, but I don't wanna close out public comment, okay. Uh, thank you Drew Grossman, I'm gonna give you two minutes of the floor.
Thank you very much, um, my name's Drew Grossman, I am an OB resident that also lives across from the Saratoga Greens. Um, I took a look at the proposal as well, and I think that there's some things that are being overlooked as far as putting a children's park right next to a parking lot that houses many of the bands and the kind of vagabonders that OB is used to. Um, I think prior to even discussing putting a children's playground next to a parking lot that is, um, you know, for lack of a better term right now, overrun. Um, maybe the committee should look at potentially limiting the hours of the park, um, instead of having fireworks go off at two in the morning. Maybe there should be some more, uh, policing of the park before a children's playground is placed right next to it. Um, because the way that I see it, you're putting a tap into a lion's den.
Thank you Drew.
Thank you.
No, you have another minute if you wanna go, I just heard a pause, so.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think there's, there's other places to put it, I kind of agree with Misha, um, that large strip of grass where the picnic tables are would be a great spot, and I also think that there's way more parking for families to actually have, um, an outing with their family, uh, and their children by Dog Beach. Uh, I think that parking lot is not as full, and I think that there's so much more overflow there, that those greens next to the volleyball courts, next to the, the actual bathrooms that are nicer would be actually a better fit for that type of, um, recreational, uh, equipment. Are you on my time?
Thank you, um, so I don't see, does anyone else have any final, Nancy, you have two minutes when you start talking.
This is not a comment, it's a question, I'm sorry, I haven't been able to attend meetings for quite a while. Um, I've been working on the utility franchise agreement, uh, with a couple of organizations, and I'm just wondering if, uh, the planning board has taken any type of stand or recommendation to the city regarding the, um, utility franchise agreement, which will come up to the city council in June.
Nancy, we have, no, Nancy, we've not taken, um, a position
Okay.
at this time, uh, if your group or anyone does wanna come present, we are, you know, the first Wednesday of June, so I do think we still have some time.
Uh, if you'd like to email me and set something up, we'd greatly appreciate it. I know we tried, I don't know, uh, what happened, so I tried to, uh, organize something, so I'll follow up on that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Before, okay, fantastic, uh, so we're gonna move along to our first action item, which is forty-eight sixty-one Coronado Avenue. Uh, so Tom and Jane, I am gonna ask you guys to, this is, yeah, bye guys, um, I'll go ahead and email you when we're reviewing the Sprint project. Okay, great, uh, and then I do believe Elizabeth Carmichael, you're their architect, yes?
Yes, yes, hi, how are you?
Yes, yes. Hi, how are you?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you so much for coming. I do believe you have the ability to share your screen if you want to go and head and do that. Yeah, great. So Elizabeth is, yeah, she'll take it away. Thank you.
Okay, how was that?
Perfect.
Okay. So this is showing, first of all, thank you for allowing me to present. This is showing the location at 4861 Coronado Avenue, just off of Sunset Cliffs, between Sunset Cliffs and the Shoreline. And this is the existing topo survey. There is a single-family house located towards the street with a covered porch and a carport. A small backyard with an existing garage here that also has a large storage area. The demo plan shows the location of the new structure and then also the demolition of the garage and existing shed that's located in the rear yard. And our new site plan locating the existing structure, landscaping in the front yard and in the building separation. And the rear will house three tandem garages as well as the two units, one being a townhome style unit. And then the other one is a flat located above the garages. And this is just our BMP plan. Stormwater. And showing you the first floor plan of the new structure. The three tandem garages will be keyed with access off the alley. A site on both sides to separate the yards from the alley. And there will be stairs to get up to the unit above the garage, exterior stairs. And then the entrance to the first unit, which is the townhome style unit. And here is our second story, which locates the entire second unit. They will have a balcony off the back, two bedrooms. And then the townhome style unit, it will be the bedroom level of that unit, also two bedrooms, two baths. And both units are roughly 1,200 square feet. Our roof plan. And this is the elevation facing the alley. Our elevation here with the entrances that faces the west. The interior elevation that faces the front house. And then the east elevation that's along the side yard. This is showing the existing structure and the new structure. Section through the existing struc-, I'm sorry, through the new structure, two stories with the gable roof. And then another section, and we are approximately three feet below the coastal height limit to the peak of our high roof. That's represented here as well. Our landscape plan will keep the existing landscaping at the front yard and the streetscape. And we're proposing patio areas at grade with walkways to get from the front to the alley. And as well as some landscape areas, new, new landscape areas as well. This is a color board, does not necessarily reflect the colors that the owners will choose, but just to show the different planes on the structure. And then let me see if I can show you some of the existing photos here. So this is the front from the street of the existing structure. The carport area and the covered porches beyond that, that you can somewhat see through there. The sidewalk facing the beach. And the house structure from across the street with the neighboring residences. To the west is a single-family home towards the street with a unit above a garage in the rear. And then on the east side is multifamily cottages, all one-story. And then this is from the west end, looking at the, the home with the adjacent properties. The existing garage from the alley and you can see the structure to the west is the mentioned unit above garage. And this is it facing a little bit towards the east to see its proximity to the adjacent law. Couple interior shots of the yard as it currently exists. This is from the garage facing the rear of the front house. Existing yard, which this would relatively remain the same, other than this shed will be demolished. So we are requesting recommendation for approval. And I'm here to answer any questions.
I have a single question.
Go for it, Craig. You have the floor.
I see the solar panels oriented towards the east. Is that because you're making allowance for the two-story structure that's to the west?
You know, it is just a suggestive. It was kind of our biggest roof plane. However, the actual solar locations will be really dialed in by the solar engineer and installer.
Okay, so that's merely preliminary or placeholder, so to speak, at this point.
Exactly, yes.
Thank you.
Do I have any other questions or, I'm sorry, do I want to? Anthony, go ahead.
Oh yeah, just a quick question to clarify. So the property is going from how many habitable units now to how many in the future state?
There is one habitable unit now and it will, the result will be three.
Very good. And then of course, the parking, off-street parking reflects that as well. So I just want to make sure.
Yes. And it, it would be, considering that we still have the existing carport, we will have one additional parking space.
Good, thank you.
I have a comment, Andrea.
Yes, and if, a comment, and if you want to give us a small recap about the PRC meeting as well, that would be allowable?
Yeah, that was mainly my comment. So we saw this, I don't know, two weeks ago at the project committee meeting. There wasn't any objections to any of it. There was, you know, a couple of comments or ideas, but nothing substantial. And I believe the city cycle comments, the sort of significant ones were historical review. But again, this is all at the back of the lot. It's not impacting the front house. And the other, I think the other unchecked comment was some, some landscaping comments. So, and the committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of the project as submitted. Pending clearing of significant comments, which I don't think there are any.
Elizabeth, do you have any outstanding cycle review issues?
We have, we're in our review right now, but there were no other significant issues. As Kevin had mentioned, we just had to document some of the existing landscaping. And then there was a request for a drainage study, which we provided. But overall, the lot is relatively flat, so I don't think any issues will arise from that.
Great, thanks. Yeah, it, it looks like a good project. It has usually, you know, the stuff we're looking for, you know, the two-story house in the back. We love that it, it provides enough off-street parking for everyone. And I, I, when I was originally looking through these plans, I was a little bit confused until I realized, oh, they're putting two units in the back and doing a townhouse style with another apartment. And I thought it was really clever that the way that both of those units were incorporated as well. So I really do applaud you on that. Do, do you have any comments from the public before I ask the board what action they want to take? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion from the board about this project?
This is Kevin. I'll move that the board recommend approval of the project as submitted.
Great, thank you. Do I have a second on that motion?
Anthony, a second.
George, a second.
Okay, I think I'll, Anthony, just be here out there, George, next time. Do I have any further discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask Tracy to call the vote and I'm also going to ask Elizabeth to please stop sharing your screen.
Okay, Melanie. Where'd you go?
Yes.
Thank you. Chris. Anthony.
Yes.
I vote yes. Jane?
Jane and Tom are both, they have to recuse themselves because this is their project.
Oh, okay. Kevin?
Kevin's a yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Richard's not here. George?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Newman? Is he still here? Anybody here Newman or see him?
It says he's still here.
Let's skip to Nicole.
I vote yes.
Virginia?
Yes.
Back to Newman. I, I see he's connected, but I can't hear him or verify any vote, so, I mean, we're just gonna have to say tech.
I'd just basically call it as absent when that, when that happens.
Yeah, I've just, I've just been putting tech difficulties, so. Okay.
Sense. It's still, it still passes and we still have quorum though. Just want to make sure. Wonderful. I will email the Grikowskis and give them, I'll give them two minutes to get back in here before we start the next project. So if anyone needs to get up and get a drink, you know, bathroom break or what have you, I'm personally going to pour myself a cup of tea. I'll let them take some time to get back in so we can go on with the next project. And then while we're waiting for that, Delilah, are you here?
Thank, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, of course. I will go ahead and send in also your bulletin 620 tomorrow. I let the Grikowskis know that as well. But in the meantime, Delilah, if you want to share your screen and get your presentation up and ready to go, again, we're just waiting for Tom and Jane to get back in here.
Thanks. Rebecca.
Hi guys.
Okay, welcome back. Congratulations. And then we will get on with the next project. This is Sprint cell site for, at 47, 4710 Point Loma Avenue.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Okay, awesome. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to present this project on behalf of Sprint. I'm Delilah. We are proposing a cell site modification at 4710 Point Loma Avenue. It's an existing cell site and we are proposing a slight modification and just to renew our permit with the city of San Diego. So currently we have eight antennas on site and we are requesting to remove those antennas and replace with nine new antennas along with removing 12 radios and installing nine radios. And so this is the existing site as is on the left here. And we are proposing to just replace antennas within these existing enclosures. We're going to replace these enclosures here and they will look the same as the existing. Same with this side of the building. So within this enclosure here are existing antennas. We're replacing those antennas and we're also replacing the enclosure. It will look the same as the existing. And this backside here, we currently have three antennas within these individual boxes. We're going to be removing and replacing those antennas as well. The city's asked that we architecturally integrate this and make it look a little nicer. So we've gone ahead and just designed one box with the matching window to kind of blend in better with the existing architecture. And then this is just a coverage map showing the coverage that the site provides, not only to the, this existing site, but to other sites within the area. They all kind of work hand in hand. And so if the site were to go off air or be removed, there would be a big gap in coverage that would greatly affect the community, emergency services, businesses, residents in the area. And then this is the coverage here showing with this current site on air. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you. I'm sure I'll go ahead and start with you. And if, if anyone wants to make a suggestion, it's kind of hard for me to see you with your screen raised. So there is a raise hand function. Press on the reactions or the little smiley face and you'll see raised hand at the top. So if you could please utilize that, both public and board members. Thank you. Tracy, you have the floor.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, because I don't, I, I would have never even known that there were cell sites on this property. But is this something that you guys install on private property and then pay them rent for the installation or the usage of their building?
The carrier does lease space from different types of businesses and residences.
Oh, okay. That's really interesting. All right. And I mean, I would have never known that they were there. They're hidden very well, so. And I mean, obviously the residents that move in there know that they have the cell, the, the antennas connected to their units, right? I mean, they know that they're there?
Um, I can't speak for like the apartment, what they let their residences know. But when we do any type of modifications or anything like this, we do send out like a public notice package. For this meeting, I went out and posted signs, you know, out in front of the building, on the side of the building. So residents could see and take, you know, participate in the meeting if, if need be. And I think, you know, the, the, the previous design here, it's, it's, it's a little bit more obvious that these are here. And so that's kind of why we changed the design up to try to hide the look a little bit better. But it's mostly just to architecturally integrate. And so I, I don't think, it's not hidden that they're there. But it's mostly just to architecturally integrate. And so I don't think, it's not hidden that they're there. I don't know, like, if the apartment notifies people when they move in and out or whatnot, what their procedures would be. But like I said, we do make it known, we're making any kind of modification. It's actually required by the city of San Diego.
Interesting. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. I only see Nancy with her hand up, but I think that's just left over from public comment.
Can I address the PRC?
Yes, please do, Kevin.
Sorry to interrupt. So, so two weeks ago, we saw this also at the project committee meeting. The, there, there was some discussion on it. I can elaborate on sort of my, my comments later, but the PRC voted three to one, I believe, or maybe it was four to one, to recommend approval of the project as submitted. The nay vote stated it was basically a nay, just to put it on as a, as a discussion item tonight as opposed to a content item. So that was the reason for that.
And I can jump in. I was the lone dissenting boy vote on the PRC. And the reason for that wasn't that there was some alarming issue with it, but just recognizing we got a lot of smart people on this board, I thought it was a good just discussion piece for us to have. Tracy, you kind of landed on one of the questions I had during the PRC in terms of, you know, what's the process and what do the residents know about the technology that's, that's, you know, hidden behind this architecture? Again, not an alarming thing to me, but just something that I thought we could have a little bit larger discussion. And I'm pleased to hear from the presenter that there was notifications that went to the, the residents of the building just to make them aware that this is something that would be changing, you know, in the building that they rent from. So, some background on the dissenting vote.
No, and I appreciate it. And I, I, I think it was a good idea. Do we have any residents of the building here that are seeking to make a comment? Or anyone else from the public? Okay, do I have any more board questions or comments?
I, I do. I'll try to be quick. This is Kevin. So, let me think about this. One question I did have, the coverage maps shows with and without, does that consider the existing equipment in operation, or is that if it's torn out? Or is that even not a, an option? I mean, is this, what, what are we comparing here?
So just, it's, it's, the coverage is if the site were to go off. So the one on the left is showing if the site were to go off air completely. It would show the gap in coverage. And then the site, the one on the right is showing what the coverage it would be with the proposed modification.
Okay, thanks. My own comment I wanted to add, I know we had a contentious cell site at a previous meeting. I wanted to mention that the, you know, the radiation limits on this were like 20 something percent of the, of the limit, whereas the other one was like 96%. The, you know, that's obviously it's already an existing use as that. So it didn't seem like a controversial subject to me. I would add that there is a proposed three-story project directly across the street on Point Loma Avenue from this. I think the applicant said that's not considered in their, in their study, and there's not really any sort of way to or precedent, I guess, for including proposed structures in that. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Those people would be subject to more, I guess, more exposure than the people actually in this building. So, but I'll let the other applicant worry about that, I suppose.
Thank you, Kevin. Do I have any other board questions before I ask a couple of questions? Okay, great. So, Delilah, if, so say we don't approve this project, would it, the antennas stay in place just with the existing?
Um, I believe, I mean, I, I know I have a draft approval from the city already. I believe it will be approved regardless. I know that they do take the board's, you know, approval, and they do want that. I think regardless, the upgrade may happen. But even if it didn't, yeah, the, this, it's an existing site that would remain. Hopefully that answers your question.
Right, thank you, it does. And my thinking just along these lines are, since, you know, we didn't hear from any of the residents of the building, my gut feeling would be to go to more voting for approval. The reason why I think the lifeguard tower was so contentious with that was that the lifeguards were so opposed to it. So I tend to fall back on what the people actually living in these buildings think about it and want. So that is where I am on this. And I'm gonna ask the board for any more final comments, any more final questions? Okay, do I have a motion from a board member?
This is Kevin. I'll move that the OB planning board recommends approval of the project as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Delilah? You can go ahead and stop sharing your screen if you want to.
Yeah, this is George, and I'll second.
Well, thank you, George. Okay, Tracy, you can go ahead and call the roll.
Melanie?
Yes.
Chris? I think I heard, I think I heard zip at the end, so, yes.
Yes, my battery's dying. I'm plugging it. Yes.
That's fine. Anthony?
Anthony says yes.
And we're seeing ourselves on your screen, by the way.
If you just want to go ahead and stop.
Stop sharing your screen. I think yes.
Perfect, thank you. Jane? Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Newman, are you back yet? Nicole?
Yes.
Virginia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So thank you so much for coming, Delilah. I will go ahead and fill out your bulletins as well. I'm just writing it on my calendar. And I will go ahead and send that to the city.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Your project continuing. Okay, let me just finish writing my notes, and then we'll get to the big topic of the night. Okay, great. So, thank you, everyone who is here to talk about the pier. Unfortunately, we had a little scheduling with the city, so just, so the actual facilities and engineers are not here. I think Teddy's still here, so he can answer questions from the council's office. We did get a briefing last Friday, which kind of falls in line with what the press release that came out today says. So the, currently, the plan is to get the pier operational, operational up to where the cafe is, and then close off the rest while the city and in conjunction with the community figures out what we, you know, what we want to see with the pier going forward. So that's really what this discussion, I think, should be focused on, as well as all previous discussions. I, I usually with these types of projects, the complaint is, is that there wasn't enough public input. So I want to get started on this early. So we do have kind of a good roundtable discussion prior to getting together with the council office, getting together with the city, and the engineers and facilities manager. So we all kind of understand what we want to see the future of this pier. You know, it's important to us, and I, I get the sense from the city that it's equally important to them. And, and what we were talking about with myself, and you know, the other leaders of the community, town council, OBMA, are the possibilities for the future greening of this pier and making it really a landmark standout project. So I do, I want to hear everyone's opinions. I do think there's gonna be a lot of them, so I am gonna cap it off on two minutes per person. And again, I really want to focus this on construction, like a constructive discussion about what we want the future of the pier to look like. You know, we all know how incompetent the last mayoral administration was in handling this, and we don't need to spend the next 40 minutes discussing that. We already know about it. So I, I really want to hear what people want to see for the future of this pier, how they want the discussions to move forward, so we can relay that back. And then the next time we come together, be it next week or the week after that, to again, discuss the future of the pier. We have, we, we have a little bit more understanding of where everyone's head at, and we can continue to move forward with actionable and constructive solutions. So with that said, I do want to start off with the public comment first, because again, it's just kind of been the leaders of these different public groups talking about it. And I don't think the public has had enough of a chance to really share their opinions. So if I have people from the public here who are wishing to speak, again, really want you to utilize that hand, raise hand function, so I can go down the list like that. So again, if you look at your bottom screen, you'll see a little happy face, and it says reactions, and then it says raise hand right at the top. So if we can go ahead and use that, and then I'm gonna just go down the list. So I'll give everyone a second. And again, not because I don't love you and I love all, and I don't love all of your opinions, just because I think there's going to be a lot of them. I'm gonna try and keep everyone at two minutes, okay? Okay. Laying down the ground rules, you know. Okay, so I don't see anyone's hands. And I know someone's out there wanting to make a comment.
I can't see my hand raised function.
If you go to the smiley face at the bottom, the reactions, raise hand is at the top. When you click on it, it should pop up. But who is this? I can give you the floor, just state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Harry. I'm with Respect Ocean Beach.
Hi, Harry. Okay, I'm gonna start your two minutes now.
Great, thanks a lot. It's a little unclear about what the, the scheduling mishap was that you announced before this. I didn't quite understand that. But I think, and not that it's anyone's, the planning board's fault, but it sounds like there's mishaps still going on. There's not really clear information being shared by the city administration. It would be great to have had the actual report authors here this evening to be able to field questions or share more information. So I, it's really great that the board wants to solicit a very vibrant public discussion. The problem is, there's, all the facts aren't out there. There's only a draft report out there from two years ago, and it's very unclear what is going on. So it's, I think it's imperative that this process for community input be informed by facts, information, real numbers, and a real timeline, so that together, the community can identify the best course of action and start proceeding quickly, rather than have months and months of, of scheduling mishaps, for example, and a lack of information. And it sounds like, from what I've heard thus far, that's what the board's committed to do. And so I hope there's a very vigorous demand for public information, so that together, we do envision the best course of action. And money should be no object. There's plenty of money for the air fighter jets flying over us all the time. So once we know as a community what, which way to proceed, we shouldn't let money get in the way. So let's just demand that our council member and mayor get behind the community's vision, but we really need no more mishaps, and we need full facts and full information, which thus far I don't see. And so thanks for the opportunity to speak, and I look forward to participating with the community to, to get this going one way or another very fast. Thanks a lot.
Yes, thank you, Harry. And you came in right on time. I greatly appreciate that as well. Do I have any more community or public input, again, about anything, any visions you want to see for the pier, how you want to see this move forward? Again, this is just for us to start the conversation so that we, we can keep it moving forward, and it doesn't get pushed back. Anyone? Any board members? Oh, Aaron Ralph, I see your hand. I'll give you two minutes once you start speaking.
Hi, yeah, thanks. I just wanted to check in and see if anyone's considered the safety issues of having the pier closed with the amount of people we see jumping the fence and then still being on the pier. That's just another point of concern for this prolonged pier closure. And I know we were on the, this town council meeting when Mayor Gloria was on a couple of months ago. And I know things have changed, but he did essentially say the city has no money. So I just want to make sure that I get that it's like, it's, the pier is great for business, and it's pretty, and I love walking on it, but more than that, it is a huge safety issue having the pier closed. That's it.
Oh, thank you, Aaron. No, that's certainly something that, you know, can be actionable to make sure that it's a little more safe. And I think we're all concerned with that since reading the report and kind of finding out that the last reopening was rushed, and what the safety status is of the pier. Thank you. So, George, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that whatever they plan, I'd like it to stay pretty much the same as it is. It seems to be very useful with the T shape, the distance out into the water, and things like that. Plus, it'd be nice to maintain the longest concrete pier on the West Coast. And that's it.
Thank you, George. Anthony, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. You know, as a board member, I would be more than supportive of any efforts to reopen the pier. Especially, I know it's the more expensive option, but the long-term option to do it right would be something that I would be interested in, knowing that if we did a temporary fix, you know, kicking the can down the road for a few years, we'll be back in the same position. However, you know, I know that I do think there's a budgetary constraint on this, of course, you know, so we have to weigh the options. But I, I would, I would be supportive of anything that would provide a long-term safe option for people to be able to, you know, for OB to keep this pier. So that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Anthony. Nicole?
Mute. Thanks, Andrea. I just wanted to chime in and say, you know, George brought it up, that it is the West Coast's longest pier. And I think we really have a good opportunity to include in our vision for a future pier to include green, sustainable energy concepts in, into the pier. I'd like to propose that we look at some sort of ocean resource center that can function as an educational hub, you know, talking about our coastal marine environments, as well as possibly looking into, you know, new advances in sustainable technology. So I'd like to see, you know, some discussion around that aspect of any future, you know, pier discussions, as well as I think that, you know, there's a good opportunity for infrastructure funding there as well. My two minutes is probably up.
Great, thank you. I saw some enthusiastic hand waving from Nancy, and I'm sure others. Virginia, I'm gonna go ahead and start your two minutes when you unmute.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I was down there recently and just trying to imagine how it would be without a pier there. It was dismal. But what I would like to see is funding allocated for the temporary safety measures that would be needed, in addition to starting the long-range planning for replacement. And money, of course, is tight, but let's say, the funding, funding was found to replace that ADA ramp, which was, you know, over a million dollars. If 10 million is required to make it safe for people to use in the near future, I'm sure the money can be found for that. And as for the long-term plans to replace it, it's a long process, and the funding and the, the design process itself will be time-consuming if we want it to be really nice. So I don't know if I'll see it in my lifetime as a completed pier. So that's why I feel it's important. It's not wasting money to make it safe so that people don't sneak on there and get themselves hurt. In the meantime, we'll have a pier that we can use. Thanks.
Thank you, Virginia. Yeah, short-term safety concern is definitely the biggest. I see Dan Dennison. I see Dan Dennison's hand up. Dan, great to see you. I'll start your two minutes when you unmute.
Hi Andrea, this is Laura using Dan's computer. Um, Laura Dennison. Hi, everybody. I tuned in late, so I didn't hear the first part of your presentation. But, um, have, um, did you talk about exploring the, uh, money that's going to be available for, um, na- nationally for repairs and structural, um, infrastructure stuff? Um, have, did you talk about that at all?
One has mentioned it, um, but I, I was going to go over it in my comments, but please feel free Laura.
Well, I think now with the infrastructure, um, bills before Congress and, and Biden's emphasis on it. Um, I know that I was reading that there is a long, long timeline. You don't have to do this right away. Um, but if we could, uh, get in on some of that infrastructure money, it really might help us to rebuild a wonderfully ecologically sensitive, educational, great pier. It's, I mean, it's, it's, it's not just our pier here in OB, although we are the hosts of it. But you just drive down the street and you see people from all over, all over the southwest really and, um, all over San Diego. So it's not just our pier. It's, it's the city's pier. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you, Laura. I appreciate your, uh, do I have, oh, Craig?
My comments are that, um, I don't think a lot of emphasis should be put on stopgap repairs in the short term. My concern is that the condition of the pier is far worse than has been led on by the city. And that, um, major renovation, including replacement of a number of the pilings and a number of the, uh, decking, uh, slabs is required if you're going to come up with something safe. So my concern is that if we say, yeah, let's allocate money to, you know, short-term Band-Aid fixes, um, it's not going to, it's not going to withstand two more winters of, uh, big swells battering it. So I think the emphasis needs to be on getting the city to commit to, yeah, we're going to spend the 60 or 70 or a hundred million dollars to do it right. Because otherwise we're just deceiving ourselves. We're just putting off the inevitable. And then they're going to say, well, now we got to demolish it because it's a safety hazard and it's too far gone. So that's my concern that money would be squandered on things that are ineffective is while overlooking the larger objective. Thanks.
Thank you, Craig. Kevin?
So I wanted to add a couple of things for anyone else listening. So I read the full report cover to cover. The recommendations in the press release, what's basically what's I guess supposed to happen was in, was recommended in that report, um, and, you know, opening it up to, you know, the end of the cafe. The city asked, what can we get for five million or what can we get for 10 million? And that was sort of the, the Band-Aid stuff. I'm uncertain at the moment if that included opening anything beyond the cafe, like the ends of the tee where all the, you know, where all the fishing is. And that covers a pretty substantial part. Maybe Jeff Page can answer to that. But I, I also wanted to add, they also had proposals on how a, a new pier might, might go in and address some of the, uh, design issues. And it, you know, they, these price tags were really to sort of fit something in the existing footprint of what's there, um, raising the pier about six feet where that dip is and, and sort of having a straight shot out. And in the end it would be at the same elevation as well. So I wanted to add that. A, a very real possibility is demolishing the pier. People should not assume that it's going to come back if they want it, we've got to fight for it. You know, OB would survive without it, but I would say the, you know, the Paris has been around long before the Eiffel Tower was there. But I don't think anyone would be advocating to, uh, to demolish that if it was in disrepair. And that's, I think the, the pier carries the same significance to our community and our city, um, as that. The, the other thing I worry about is if, if we don't do some interim repairs. And again, I'm not clear if the five or 10 million is required to get that two-thirds of the pier open safely. Uh, I hope, I hope Jeff can speak on that. But if we don't do interim repairs and there's some catastrophic failure, I, I think that's, uh, that doesn't spell well for the, the future of this and it could cause potentially more damage, um, and, and more cost. And really just an absolute eyesore of just having this, this wreckage decorating our beachfront, uh, for years or, or a decade, you know, I mean, how long does it take an orchard stairs to get, uh, through the process and, and get repaired, right? So I, I don't want to see that happen. I don't want to see that, uh, that, uh, black eye on our community for that long. So, uh, maybe we can advocate for, for doing both. You know, temporary repairs as well as, as long-term repairs. That's, that's what I would advocate for.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, I know you asked Jeff to speak, so if he wants to, he can come in after DK. Cause I do see DK's hand up. DK, I'll start your two minutes. Yep.
Cool. Thank you very much. Um, I just sort of wanted to underscore some of what I heard earlier. Um, I think the, the, what I was about to say up until Kevin's point just a moment ago is that I also, uh, I'm less in favor of a short-term fix versus something that's a little bit more comprehensive. And that's obviously factoring in the, you know, limited resources and that builds kind of into my next point of looking to actually, um, identify and ultimately allocate resources. I think someone to touch on some of the, um, sort of federal activity, uh, and the dollars that may come down from there. So I think to the extent that we can try to be proactive, which I remember Andrea at the top of this, you'd said, look, look sort of forward as opposed to complaining about what, what's done. Um, I think that would probably best be our best, um, line of attack or, or probably the best way that we can spend our time or, or resources is looking to, um, you know, obviously in deference to the city, uh, but with respect to what we can do, look to try to find, um, you know, solutions for, for long-term fixes. And, and like I said, trying to prioritize those long-term strategic features. I think it was maybe Nicole or someone else who had talked about what we can do to, to sort of harness new technology and, and also keep in mind. Um, I don't think I've heard the word sea level rise, but I was also here a few months ago when assembly member, almost a council member, assembly member Chris Ward was here talking about some of what he's doing at the state and some of those allocation of funding from there, uh, for green and sustainable and sea level rise oriented issues. And I think this, there's a compelling argument to be made that this pier falls within that bucket. So kind of just underscoring a lot of what I've heard and, and I think sort of putting a pint, a finer point on it saying that I'm not a huge personal fan of short-term fixes. Would certainly rather spend, uh, my time personally, uh, looking for long-term sustainable solutions, um, for this, for this issue.
DK, you came in right on your time. All right. Uh, that was the last hand I saw. I know. Is there, Jeff, do you have anything? Jeff Page, do you want to jump in and say anything? Okay, or I'll, uh, go ahead and kind of wrap it up with what I conceive of as the next step game plan. To echo a bunch of, you know, we all want to see it come back. Um, I definitely lean towards long-term solutions, long-term fixes. And I agree with Nicole that if we look at this as a new green infrastructure pro- project, we can certainly level, um, leverage those federal dollars and then possibly the state climate resiliency dollars. I know those are more, uh, earmarked for fire projects. But I think there is a case to be made for this pier. And I think since, as Anthony pointed out, it is the longest concrete pier on the west coast. It is, it, it's a headline grabbing title. And I, I think there definitely could be a lot of political will if we talk the loudest about it. Cause that's at the end of the day, who's going to get those federal infrastructure dollars? It's the people who ask for it. Uh, so I think following in line with Nicole's idea and really focusing this as a green infrastructure project, uh, you know, with energy capture, sustainable energy, and then also throwing in an educational component is how we're going to get the money. I know when we've talked to the city about it, I have heard some extra commercialization of the pier, which I think will get us less money if we do that. Uh, so that would be a fight that I foresee coming. Wanting to put more things on a pier, like there might be on other peers that we see up and down the coast. But then I think that makes the case for our climate resiliency project a little bit less strong despite it maybe attracting more attention and more money specifically for the city. So I, again, the community that talks the loudest and asks the most times for the money is going to get the money. So this is why I want, you know, us to show up in force to this meeting, to the next meeting, um, and to every meeting. And if we need, you know, to organize a letter writing campaign, campaign to Scott Peters and maybe possibly even Juan Vargas. Cause like we said, this isn't just our pier, you know, it's the whole city's pier. And I know I'm sad that our fishermen who I'm sure come from all over, haven't had any place to fish for the past times. You know, I think of them, um, you know, it's the only time I think of the tourists who want to come and take some nice pictures. But i- it really does belong to all of us. And I think the more we take that approach, the louder and more convincing will be. So I, I just want everyone to keep thinking about this. Especially because it'll be, you know, either next week or the week after that, that we will be having a meeting like this again. And Teddy did mention a working group. So we want that to be, you know, not just board members, but community members too. So please don't hesitate me. If you have any interest in serving on the working group, uh, the, or just sitting in on the working group, getting updates about the working group, go ahead and email me and let me know. And I will start getting a list together for that as well. So again, we can just stay on top of this, uh, and do what we have to do to make these long-term solutions possible. But hopefully, uh, it does get opened quickly in a safe manner. Do I have, uh, any, I saw someone kind of raise their hand at the last second. Do I have any final comments? Or hi Teddy, did you hear, were you able to kind of eavesdrop on our conversation?
Yeah, it sounded so good. I, I just wanted to kind of, uh, thank the community for providing their thoughts on this. It's clear that it's, uh, a beloved landmark and everyone wants to do what they can to make the most out of any investment that we're going to do. Uh, I just wanted to highlight some things just to provide a little more context around where things are at this point. We obviously got the, the latest report and a briefing from the departments. And our hope was to have some department staff, um, here today to answer your kind of more technical questions, structural engineering questions, um, and, and have them explain the extent of the damage timelines, et cetera. And I think it was really just a short timeline, given how fast, uh, information is moving. And so I, I just wanted to, to reiterate our point that we will have a community forum with department staff, with the experts to, uh, share that information with the community and provide that extra avenue for, for asking these questions. We'll post that and share that with this group. Um, so please look out for Council President Campbell's social media, her website to see when that, uh, community forum will be, uh, up and running. I'm hoping for the end of the month. And so I mean, there's just so much happening with budget this month. And so we're trying to coordinate with, uh, different departments who can, you know, be available. I have a call tomorrow with a, a group of various department staff to figure out who needs to be there, who can be there and all of those logistics. So I do apologize that, um, we couldn't get the folks here tonight and that the, the department staff needed a little bit more time. But our office will be hosting a forum on this subject that obviously is going to be, um, the short-term, the long-term approach. Uh, we want to see the pier opened and, and, you know, return to the community as soon as possible. I, I, I will say from what we know that the extent of the damage is beyond the cafe. And so that's why we are, as you saw in that press release, looking at getting a reopening partially to that end, um, just before the cafe section. And so that is a short-term thing. There is funding and we're told it's safe to do so. So we want to be able to do that as quickly as possible. A lot of those questions about timeline and how we're going to try to leverage the infrastructure funding that was mentioned federally, try to pull on some grants from the state level, uh, to try to get some repair funding. It's going to be a different, you know, multi-year approach. So we want to first be able to open the pier again, get those repairs in place and create this working group. As Andrea mentioned, it's not just the planning board. This is OBMA, the town council, uh, all the community members involved. So we want to make sure that there's a forum, uh, beyond just one office. It's going to be a multi-year effort. And, uh, we want to make sure that the community has some, some avenue to provide that input. So our office will be available, uh, to relay that input. We want you all to be engaged. We know how important it is. And, uh, I just thank everyone for providing their input here tonight.
Thank you, Teddy. And we did hear from multiple people that there might just be some still safety concerns about people jumping the fence and still going out on the pier. So, uh, if we could just report that to maybe PD or whoever can get out there and maybe Parks and Rec can just, uh, keep an eye on it for us.
Yeah, I can hear that. I'll relay that concern for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and George, I did see your hand shoot up at the end there.
Yeah, I was just reminded, we've got a very good friend that's a marine engineer that works for a company out of Bellingham, Washington. And all they do is piers and they just recently got a contract to work with the city of Venice that apparently has some significant damage to their pier. So I didn't know if the city would want to contact them and see what their level of damage was and how it might compare to what we've got here.
Yeah, thank you, George.
I got one real quick thing, if I may.
Yeah, Kevin.
I just wanted to just, uh, give, you know, major credit to, uh, the OB RAG and as well as, you know, their reporters and, and Jeff Page for bringing this to light. You know, some of us know this has been looming in the background and, and but to actually get our hands on this report is a big deal. We wouldn't be here talking about it now with all this attention if not for, uh, their efforts. And, uh, you know, wish, wish it would have been, wish we could have been on this sooner, but, uh, better, better late than never. So let's, uh, full steam ahead.
Thank you. Fully agree. Um, so again, please do email me. I'll go ahead and pop it in the chat. Cause I guess, um, yeah, not everyone knows my email here. Oh goodness, though I have to select everyone. Okay. So please do email me if you have any interest about the working group and we'll make sure to communicate that. Again, once we do have a date for when, uh, the city and council is going to come out and have a community forum that will be blasted in all the other places that you found your way to this meeting tonight. So we will try our hardest not to miss you. Uh, before I close out this information item, do I have any last comments? Before I go to chair and other reports? All right, great. Um, I, I really do think, um, we're going to see some good results here. Because I, I, again, I think it's just whoever complains the loudest and the most frequently. And, uh, we do have a whole ocean bitch Facebook page. So I know as a community, we are quite good at that. So I'm, I'm hopeful and I'm keeping an optimistic outlook, which I think is important. So closing that out, moving into chair announcements, I just have two. So next month I, I, I asked Miller, he wasn't here tonight, uh, but I asked him to ask his housing policy advisor to come and give a presentation about the housing bills that are moving through, uh, the, the state legislature. So please keep that on your radar and, uh, there's, uh, a couple of good websites and resources on how to kind of look up those bill packages. Uh, so you just keep that at top of mind. And then I have heard back from everyone except for Melanie, Virginia and Nicole about meeting again in person. So if the three of you could just shoot me an email about your preferences, that would be greatly appreciated. Uh, and that is all I have. Uh, I'm going to pass it off to Craig for treasurer's report. And then we'll go to Kevin for vice chairs.
Okay, treasurer's report. There's currently in the planning board account at US Bank,
Uh, and then follow-up questions. So are you going to, are we going to submit our request for reimbursement prior to hearing back from Coda? Or are you going to wait until you hear back from Coda?
I was going to throw it back to you Andrea and ask you if you have heard anything from the city with respect to whether they are going to be doing reimbursements to planning boards this year, as they have in the past.
Yes. So I haven't heard anything about not doing it. So I, I have faith, full faith that they are doing it. The conversations I've heard have been about, uh, actually increasing the budget. So as far as I know, they will certainly reimburse us for anything under $500. But some planning boards are pushing for more money because I think they've just incurred even more costs, uh, with this online meeting format. So I think we should just go ahead and submit.
Okay. What your intention would be to, uh, submit, um, follow, well, following, uh,
follow, well, following June 1st, because that will allow me to pick up the last website hosting from, we're no longer with Dyna Host, where they changed their name, but the website hosting fee. I would simply ask any board members who have any expenses extant for out-of-pockets that they have incurred this year, please get those to me prior to June 1st so that I can include those in the reimbursement to the city. And when you do that, if you have any of those, you need to actually include the receipts and the proof of payment. The city is really tough on those in terms of wanting to see verification or proof of payment. Anthony, I know that you've got some that, that you've, I've reimbursed and you're going to have to get me the proof of payment on that so that I can submit it to the city.
You got it.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kevin.
The project review committee will be having a catch-up meeting in two weeks. A lot of projects coming through, so we got to keep that, keep that rolling. So PRC members, you know who you are. I will notify you when that agenda is ready.
Great, thank you. It's actually fun to see projects again. I feel like there was such a long stretch where we weren't seeing projects. So I'm glad, you know, glad, glad to see them again. All right. Tracy, do you have a secretary's report? And then I guess might as well arts and culture, if you have anything.
One thing is there will be a transportation subcommittee meeting, March 20th or May 24th. So keep an eye out for that. If you have anything that you would like to suggest that the transportation subcommittee discusses, please let me or Andrea know and we can make sure that that gets on the agenda. I have no secretary specific things. Let's see, but I do have an arts and culture thing, of course, every month. Okay, so I wanted to make an announcement that, and I'm not sure if I gave it to OB planning board or not, but I found out recently, and since we have so many residents online right now, I found out recently that there is a toolkit that helps city residents and organizations navigate the application process for murals within the public right-of-way. A couple of examples could be like a crosswalk mural or an intersection mural or something that is in the public and it is controlled by the city or belongs to the city. This toolkit will basically walk you through how to apply for this. And then once you have an idea and a proposal in mind, it goes before the Arts and Culture Commission. And then they will, it's not really an approval process as much as it is we need to make sure that you guys are doing it correctly, you're following the rules and that it's going to be installed and disposed of in an appropriate manner. The most recent one that I saw was an intersection mural up by one of our law schools in the Cortez area, I think it is. And it was a complete intersection mural and it's a five-year commitment. So they're going to install a mural. It's going to be for five years. And then they're responsible for either removing it or paying somebody to remove it or whatever. Or I guess they could continue the contract and leave it there. So I'm going to go ahead and put an, a link to the PDF that has the toolkit and all the information on how to get a public right-of-way project done. And if anybody has any questions, I'll also put my email in the chat as well. And I think that's it for, for arts and culture this month, for me, for the commission.
Thank you. Just running through a couple of the other people. Yeah, Anthony, anything from NACAC?
Yes, we just finished a meeting just before this meeting and it was rescheduled. We did a milestone vote for the Part 50, 150 study and to move it forward to the FAA for review and also to the airport board for review. And that particular study looks to reduce noise within a 65 decibel contour that affects Ocean Beach residents in particular. I wanted to, and, and there was another vote that we did as well to help try to maintain and decrease nighttime departure noise. Right now, some of that noise is, has been diverted. Well, Ocean Beach gets the 100% of it anyway, but as it goes out over the ocean before it leaves the jetty, part of it goes to South Mission Beach. And of course, you know, the residents of South Mission Beach wanted to move it all to Ocean Beach would, in fact, then what we would do is make 100% of the noise everywhere over Ocean Beach. So I wanted to, first of all, I wanted to shout out to Fred Cosmo from the Peninsula Board. He's on our team as well on the, on the meeting there. And Mandy, you can let him know. I appreciate his support for helping us, you know, keep that the way it is. But if anybody's interested in this, please reach out to me or the, go directly to the airport noise office website, which I just posted there. But I think it's very important for the folks of Ocean Beach to know how, you know, we're trying to maintain and decrease noise within the peninsula as well as OB proper. So.
Thank you, Anthony. I do appreciate it. Yeah, Fred's great. Sorry, I'm looking after a dog. So I see Tom and Jane. And is there anything from the Historical Society? And then I see Chris, do you have anything from the airport? Tom, Jane?
Yeah, well, we had a Zoom presentation by Richard Carrico on Women of Presidio and it's on the YouTube channel. So you can see the presentation there.
Great. Chris, do you have anything from the airport?
Just really quick, not too much airport stuff today, but I wanted to give a shout out to one of the fine artists that we have in our community, Aaron Glasson, who has done a mural at the airport on Admiral and Wade, this huge 140-foot-long mural. But he also has an extravagant mural on the side of Little Lion. So if you haven't seen it, go check it out. And this guy's incredible artist. So just shout out to him and all the other good artists that are continuing to do work in these challenging times. That's it.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, Aaron is great. And then Virginia, do you have anything from Forest Street?
Well, I wanted to let anyone know, if you would like to advocate for trees in the budget hearings, I can forward you information on that. And apparently there's a hearing concerning the Parks and Rec Department tomorrow. So that would be one good opportunity. And also some of our Parks Committee might be interested in having that. So just send me an email at bma.wilson@outlook.com and I'll forward the information.
Okay, great. Thank you, Virginia. Any other final committee reports, final comments? Okay, great. So we'll move forward with the June meeting still online. I think like the closest we can again possibly get to meeting in person would be July if everyone emails, emails me back and says they're comfortable with it. But we're, there's still some questions around, you know, spacing and we'll just have to see how the regulations on in-person meetings are because I, you know, if we're not allowed to have kind of more than 20 people in a room, this might just be the better forum because I, you know, we don't want to restrict any sort of access to the meeting. But thanks everyone for showing up. And I, again, we will let you know as soon as it's scheduled, what we're doing to move forward with the pier. And let's all continue to be great advocates for our community and enjoy your Wednesday night. Go Padres.
Go Padres.
Bye, guys.
Go A's.